Probably think would be spent a couple of weeks, maybe a month. Most of those folks in prison and everything.
I have not filled out a, I have not filled out a citation on it.
You don't have to, not yet. This is the first part. This is the notice part. And you give them time to debate. If he doesn't do it, then you can move to, sorry, you can move to, to cite him.
Okay.
And then, and now we're talking end of February. So we're looking at March now as to when you would have criminal action.
Okay.
We now talk to Don, Mayor, we got, calling as well, but we're all on the same page now. The prosecutor and Village Council and Dana and so, so. This was the big part of it that he worked up here. It was good.
I'd like to read that though.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
I think that's it.
Oh, I apologize. I'm sorry. I'm very sorry. I'll hold this until we have everyone. Sorry.
You want to know something? You have anything you want to talk about?
I do. There were two things that Council wanted me to look at last time. One was this, and the other was the property on Riverside. And I did receive a response from Attorney Dalton. All right. He represents both the people, the folks that live on Riverside and the people that own the bank building now. He's got both votes. He says that they reviewed Attorney, the other Attorney Liam, Don, Don Liam's letter. And they felt that their, he felt their clients were not responsible. And he lays out a couple of reasons. The first one, I don't have a lot to worry about. They talked about the road being so wide, and they go through the middle of the road, and talk about the right of way. I don't think they're right about that part of it. They think that the right, that the tree's in the right of way. And as I said before, I don't agree with that. But two, even if it is in the right of way, that just gives us the right to go and do what we want to do to it. It doesn't relieve them the responsibility to do what they have to do to it. So that argument doesn't worry me. They also talk about the fact that the code that's mentioned, the law, talks about the county engineer, the board, township trustees, being able to remove trees. Again, I don't buy that because it empowers a governmental agency. In townships, it's trustees. In counties, it's boards, county engineers. But in villages, it's the village tree administrator. So with the thrust of that argument, I think it's going to fail because our tree administrator was empowered to do that by our code. Then it also talks about, and this is what I wanted to check with Dana. It said that we did that without notice to them. Did we write them a letter?
Absolutely. I've got to talk here.
And I thought he did.
Absolutely.
And that's why I'm like, gosh, I thought, said to write a letter, and I thought, I looked at it, but I can't remember where he gestured, you know, so I wasn't sure about that.
The thing that we talked about with the letter to each of them, they both got the same letter, and in both of them, it said that the owner of the underlying property will be responsible for paying of the tree. In other words, we would, we are going to authorize it, but the ultimate financial responsibility will be for the underlying property.
Yeah.
And that was, I think it was your generally ambiguously vague.
I think so too. So, so I don't know that you did not communicate well with clients, or I don't know what happened. But so other than that part of it, it's one thing I was worried about. I think we have a pretty good argument. I said it's Attorney Liam. Don Liam. And it didn't...
Box keep from the street.
No. The attorney, the land title attorney. Well, if they take a look at it and give me your opinion, and provided he says, I don't see it, then I'm not going to communicate with anybody. I'm just going to send it down to the county or to put it on the tax bill. If they want to make a, a motion or a restraining order against us, let them do it. But I'm not, I'm not going to negotiate this as if some kind of, they're going to spend more money fighting us over doing this than they, they just would have done it in the first place, which I think every good citizen who lives here would have done, as other people have done. The same folks that lived down the road from them, cut their tree down as soon as they got the letter, they didn't complain about it, they did it. And they don't have nearly the funds that these folks do. So I'm not in a, I'm not going to recommend that I negotiate them. If I find from Attorney Liam that he believes that they did not have a valid argument, I'm going to recommend sending it down to the auditor, replacing it on a tax bill, and let them, let them go through that.
Good.
But I'm just waiting for his opinion. And like I said, when I reviewed it, the only thing I could see was the notice part. And if we have the notice part, then it's just legal arguments. To me, it's not anything we didn't follow. Pretty close there. So that's it.
Anthony, we had a question that we talked about in the looper meeting before this. And I recall you saying that as far as getting permission from the school board for us to go ahead and complete the electric work that needs to be done here before our celebrated bowling, that we needed a res, you wanted a resolution you got from them. So is, is that what you recall, that it was a resolution thing from them?
From the school board.
Or something in the minutes?
Just showing that they have noticed of our intention to do this, and they agree with it. Therefore, if we would do something and they would be wrong, you know, if the workmanship was subpar, then no one would say, well, the village did that, you know, out of, who didn't, heart-tucked us to, you know, get our approval. And I think it's just, it's their property, so as well as ours. And I think we should do that, that it is the right thing to do, respectful of the board.
So just ask them to make a resolution during that meeting and record it in the minutes.
And send us a copy.
And, 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 you know, I mean, I would think we would act under the same principles that we wanted the county to act under, whoever was in charge, that just, you know, out of, decided to change our stuff in the first place. We wanted them to come for us and ask if we did the same thing when we intended to do it.
Would you want us to do this in a different manner? Like, do you want the, do you want the mayor to send a letter of request to them, something more formal, so that we're covering everything the way that we should?
Let me think, the mayor would have to have to.
I mean, as much as you have work on your...
I think that'd be a good idea. It should be a long letter.
A long letter.
Couple pages. I want you to review it about 40 times.
Thank you.
Can I have that, Tim?
Yes, sir.
I will take care of that. Anything else, Mr. Mayor? I talked to Dave Smith today, and I was going to recommend him behind the fun. He said he would be glad to do that. And I talked to Jim Swatter for Forest Board. He said he would do it. And then Eleanor Zedeker called me over the weekend, and she had mentioned to me that she'd like to do the Forest Board also. And her reasoning was to continue VOP's projects. There's a couple of things that are in works right now, that rebuilding that pavilion and film by the Federal and some other things. And she said she'd like to stay on to see those finished also. So I'd like to recommend maybe put two people on the Forest Board in the time being to fill Bob's position, if that's, if that's okay. Is that all, Anthony?
Why don't you talk to, do you have an explanation situation?
Please put more, does it have to be a certain number of people on the Forest Board, or bring in one extra one?
Go ahead.
Isn't it all set by ordinance?
I believe it is set by ordinance. That's just how many people.
Anthony, if an honorary person would be appointed as an honorary member, she can just go and do whatever.
That's all right.
Not vote?
I'll look here.
She wants to be on the board, not on the...
Is it the Board of Commissioners of the municipal forest? Is that what it's?
Yeah. I told you about this, Joe. James Brammer, who's B-R-A-M-M-E-R. He's a urbanist for Milker Park and the Resilience Village. And he came to us back in April, 2020, said he'd be interested. Now, that is a good guy.
How about he give you a tree commissioner?
There you go. Yeah.
There you go. I know Dave really has hard set on it. Do you have a number for him?
Yep.
Number on there?
Yep. I'm a very knowledgeable engineer.
Sure.
Six members.
Has to be six.
How many do we have right now?
I don't know. I don't have anything in front of me, but I would imagine that.
I'm sure eight members.
Yeah, it's more than six, definitely. Is that a clean council guy or not?
Well, yeah, that's, there are six who are appointed by you with consent of council. And then...
That's a member of the Zedeker Tree Commissioner.
Forest Board.
One, it shall be the chief of the oddity of forestry. One person. And one who shall be a member of council who has served.
Yeah, who's on it besides you, Jeff?
Jack Chibsky, Joel R. Case, and then Bob Zedeker, Frank Gudkowski, and myself, Beth Queen, Bob Elias, and a state forester, Ben Hines.
That's right.
That's one of the seven.
Plus the state foresters.
Five, six, seven.
State forester?
No, I haven't counted.
Let's see it. One, two, three, four, five, six.
Seven, eight.
Yeah.
Eight, yep. Ben Hines shows up.
So we can't put the vote on the same table?
Not to make the vote, we're six appointed by you. Six appointed by you, one member of council, and then the forestry chief.
Then I would recommend we put Eleanor on for the time being, and have Jim replace her if and when she wants to come on.
Not necessarily. He could be.
Unless someone...
Would be great.
But for the time being, I've heard of that.
You'll talk to, you'll talk to Jim and tell him, tell him, okay.
Because she said she has, she has all those old notebooks and dozens and everything, and she knows where he was working.
No, he didn't come and ask. He didn't come and ask. You, Joe asked him.
I asked him if he knew anybody, and if he said he would do it.
And how about the Forest Foundation? Dave Smith, we were talking...
He's on the Heim Fund. He's going to need the Heim Fund.
Yeah, okay.
I don't know what the foundation...
Yeah.
I don't know if you know if we recommend those people at the foundation.
I don't know.
Isn't the foundation a private?
Yeah.
I think they just kind of...
Yeah, Bob Langen is the president.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't recommend for that. They pick her up.
Okay. So Dave Smith is going to be in the Heim Fund.
Yeah. They have another person, I reckon, but we'll...
Well, we... And then we got the Western Reserve Fire District.
Yep. I better figure something for that, too.
You need a citizen for that, right?
Just want to do that. And I recommend Jeff to do that. All right, 7:32, stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, two to five, United States of America, and two to recolher for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just...
Rule call, members.
Mr. Donovan.
Here.
Turn your head on.
Here.
Mr. Major.
Here.
Mrs. Ser.
Here.
Mrs. Yeh.
Here.
Motion for, to excuse, constable, set up.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? All right, acceptance of a minutes from the previous council meeting. Looking for ways of reading and approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Abstain.
opposed? Okay. Notification of meetings and events to the public and news media, looper.
Okay, so, we need to schedule a finance meeting. I understand from Nick that, and he did present numbers here tonight, but we're not prepared yet for a report. That will be at the next meeting. So the next meeting is February the 4th. So we need a finance meeting to be scheduled somewhere between February the 5th and February the 14th. What works for you, Mark?
Anything after the 9th? What is, what is Sunday in the 9th?
Sunday is the 10th.
Okay, any, 11th, 12th, or...
The 13th?
End of that, yeah.
Okay, any of those nights?
Any of those nights.
Okay. Nick, what about you? You need to be at this.
I'm fine.
Any of those nights? Okay. What time?
6:00. 5:00, anything you want.
Okay, so, we have an understanding that Joe would like to help with finance, but that is only if Mark is not going to be able to be in attendance. So I think probably the best way for us to be handling this is that if a person cannot make the meeting, they notify Joe, so that Joe comes in place, because we can't have four council people.
Okay, I got a, I got a list here, Linda, of the way it is right now. And maybe, what should we talk about? The committees? Why do you want to do that?
You want to do that now, Tim, or...
Business of it.
Since we're talking about committee meetings?
That's good.
I gave you a copybook. Anthony, you want? Thank you. Anybody wants to change, or?
I thought we had settled on already, huh?
Are we changing anything?
No, that's what I wanted to know.
We had settled on it before, I know. Couple of weeks ago.
All right, if that's okay with everybody.
Yeah, yeah, we had settled.
Okay. I gave you one question.
Yeah.
Okay, that's the way it is now.
Yes.
Everybody wants to stay the way, same way?
All right.
Okay, Buildings, Land, Utilities, Parks and Recreation, Bill, Bob, and Linda? Okay?
So we could do any day this week. It doesn't matter to me. I'll make it work for me.
Okay.
Tuesday?
Finance, Wednesday.
The 11th?
That's okay, that's fine.
And what time?
Legislation, policy, estimate.
You name it.
Yeah, please. Good to me.
6:30.
That's fine.
Okay. All right, so we are having a finance meeting on February the 11th at 6:30. I will contact Mark. If he is unable to attend that, Joe, I'm going to ask him to notify you, so that you'll take his place.
Okay. Finance, what day?
February 1st.
Same thing. 6:30.
Got it.
All right, that was finance. Legislation?
Nothing.
Police?
Nothing.
Streets?
Nothing. Well, we have the contract tonight. We'll give it to Anthony to look it over.
At the next meeting, that's the next street meeting, first Tuesday, right? Or is it Thursday?
Third, third.
All right, four, JR D.
We meet, as always, the first Thursday of the month, 7:00 PM, Village Hall.
Plating?
It's the third Wednesday at 7:00 AM.
Is there any more of appeals?
Nobody did, it's a...
Western Reserve Fire District?
Western Reserve Fire District. Our monthly meeting is the second Wednesday of the month. Our next meeting will be Wednesday coming through February 12th, and we will now be meeting at 7:30 PM.
Forest Board?
Oh, County Department.
And Highland Memorial?
We have a meeting tomorrow at 3:00.
Tomorrow at 3:00?
Yep.
All right, Department of Mayor, I told you about my recommendations to summarize, Dave Smith for the Heim Fund, Eleanor Zedeker for the Forest Board, and Jeff Rabel for the Fire District. The only thing I have is December violations per your account has been balanced.
Make motion to accept the mayor's report.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? The Department of Fiscal Officer?
Okay, circling around the list of bills to be paid, who do you do this list of, the ones that we went over last meeting? So that's why this list is so long, for the whole month of January. You received the, see now, the numbers for the month of December, which includes the entire year of 2014. I will be looking through that a little better within the next few weeks, and I'll give you a little bit of a summary of where we're at. Circulating around the reconciliation for 1230, 113, everything is all reconciled, and I need your signature on that. The W2s have all gone out, and to report, looking to, accept?
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Me from the Devon Court.
No report. Department of Southern Administrator?
Okay, we talked about it quite a bit in caucus. I have two other things. One is I'll be coming to finance with requests for some various items that I think will help in the enforcement of things. On one occasion, someone said that they wouldn't answer the door because they didn't know who I was, and I was unmarked. So what I'm looking for is basically business cards, possible blank thank you cards, some type of a shirt, possibly a windbreaker jacket, something that lets people know who I am so they don't think that I'm, you know, a bad guy. Okay? So that's what I'll, I'm going to be looking for, those type of things. In addition, I'll also be asking to have our plat map digitized. That would be a considerable expenditure. Hopefully, it can come out of the courtroom computer. Okay? We're dealing with something that is just totally antiquated, and I think that if it were digitized with layers, layers being, one layer would have lot numbers, the other would have parcel numbers, the other would have owner information, and the other would have actual street addresses, we can get things done a lot quicker. So, just an idea. I don't have any costs on that, so I wouldn't know. But that's what I'm...
Any of that available from the county?
Can you say that?
Would any of that available from the county?
Well, they, obviously, they do have tax maps with, there's aerial views, there's also, this has parcel numbers, but we can have all this in the same place, because this does not contain lot numbers, it also doesn't contain what we call plate numbers and owner information.
And you, you don't need the county GIS?
Absolutely.
GIS.
It's all, it's all there. But it doesn't matter until you're on. And you have it all layered.
Perfect. Okay. Then maybe we don't need to reinvent the wheel?
If you can go to the county website and look at that, it might be, you know...
Okay.
Just the cost of getting it from...
Sounds good to me.
Okay, the first part, the first part about the windbreaker and stuff, I think it's a good idea. Let's do that, right? Are we agreed?
Absolutely.
I can go for it, so.
I'll come up with some, just something that's simple, that says, you know, screen printed, say, bowling village.
Village. You can get a, somebody had one, I remember.
I'm, I'm not looking to be Deputy Dog or something.
I don't think that that's a huge expenditure, and that probably could just come out of the regular zoning line item.
Okay.
You know, without us budgeting special for something, jackets, it's going to cost all that much. We do allow a certain amount of money in the budget.
Hundred bucks.
And zoning items for, but if you have, if you have more expensive items that you're talking about, I would like to see those.
Okay.
You know, because we are talking budget time now.
Sure, right.
Yeah, maybe, maybe if you call the county and try and give cost on that plat maps, just in case it's going to be something that's expensive.
Okay, I'll make a call.
Okay, but the first part, we're going to do.
Sure.
And the second part, you're going to get some...
Just, just for an FYI, the maps that we use in school transportation are generated from the county, and they're between 5 and 7,500. And they get them, they're already, and they just get them to us for the access, for us to use them for our streets and stuff that we use. So that's, you know, I don't know if it's going to be the same type of information, but that might be a ballpark.
Okay, Jeff, do you know how to do that? Maybe we...
I'll talk to him.
Okay.
I'm making a note right now.
It was between 5 and 7,500, it just depended on...
5,7,500.
And if they can come out of the court computer fund, I mean, this has to do with enforcement, and it is, it is dealing with our computer.
You can do that, David.
Full time.
Jeff, talk to them.
But it can come out of general fund.
Got it.
That's it. End of report.
Motion to accept Dave's report.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Book from our solicitor.
The contract with MS is the same as have been passed, I believe.
Yes, sir.
500 is the cap, and then any conditional top that we build, they build per hour based upon the rate schedule that they have captured. So it's, I'm okay with it. I've proved it before. So once council proves it, then those can enter.
$2,500.
With regard to the letter, I did make the changes, Dave. I thought about it a little bit more in council. Rather than specifying the six things, I just put that your property has been deemed a public nuisance in that your building and or dwelling tends to injure the health and unlawfully annoy the persons in the neighborhood thereof, which is the code. So it takes it out of that. And then gives him until February 28th to abate the nuisance. So that's the general area. There's no one thing he has to do. He has to make it so that we feel it's cleaned up. So it gives us a little more latitude, a little more leeway, rather than specifying what he can and cannot do. So I'd make those changes, with more publicity to look at it, and I'd recommend that be sent to our Heim Fund. About that. Oh, I'm sorry, one other thing, Dave, if you can, if you can give me, I know I have it, but you probably have it more ready at hand, copies of the letter sent to the folks on Riverside and the bank building, so I can reference them when I respond back.
It's going to be on my computer. I can even hold to.
Thank you.
Make motion to accept the sources of report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Who are from Chief of Police and Street Commissioner?
Yeah.
Have data on the events from last week that's going on there?
Not yet.
Did the youngstown request these cars, or you just offered it to...
They kind of requested them.
But what value are those cars?
Minimal. The one's been sitting there for a couple of years. We tried to sell it before and couldn't.
But these are the same ones that we tried to sell and attempted to get rid of?
Yeah.
So we did go through the whole procedure the right way, and we're selling them, but We've already done that.
Yeah.
So if we can't sell them...
We don't have to anymore?
Anthony, we were, we were discussing this a little bit before the meeting, and I didn't recall that, but that does jog my memory now. There's a section of code where you're going to get rid of public property, that you have to sell it if it's worth more than a thousand dollars. We did all of that, we tried, and it didn't work. Nobody wanted it. So if we just want to donate it, would you say a simple motion by council to do that? Or do you think there's something more to it that we would need to do?
My inclination is a motion would be fine. Let me try to find it real quick while we're sitting here. You're good with that?
Yeah.
All right. We'll find it. That should be fine.
You want to give it to them, don't you?
Yeah.
Get the scrap value or not?
Yeah. This is a donation.
There's something, because we did it in the county as well.
Oh, okay.
Where you have an inventory, and you've got to, the county got to offer it to other county folks, you don't have to do that here.
Yeah.
So I think it is done, but let me, let me...
No, you put the fix there as well.
You know?
We don't, we don't piece it up. Yeah.
Okay, I didn't have to wait for...
No, I'm going to be in there.
Okay, I'm going to make a, accept the report of the police and street.
Second?
Call in favor?
Aye.
What was she, the two cards, their cards?
Department of Engineers, more. Reports from outstanding committees of council, finance, wage, audit, and insurance.
The only thing I want to do is remind you one last time, because we're going to start meeting on this budget. So if you have, I don't have any requests except the things that were discussed here tonight, which is the start of these. So if anybody has anything that you've forgotten to turn in to finance, things that you need specifically, more important than wants. We all have wants, of course, for the village. But we want to make sure we cover needs first, and then take a good look at this budget and see, you know, what costs we have left to work with.
Any other questions? Copy here. Legislation and policy?
Yeah.
Police and fire? Unfortunately, Matt. Street sidewalks and drainage? And Looper?
Yeah, we have to like talk about starting to, we changed the rental agreement for use of the property. And charge, and charge a fee for use. We discussed a hundred dollars for non-residents, fifty dollars for residents, and also a fifty dollar security deposit. And, but we would waive all fees for non-commercial slash nonprofit uses. And we put this on the rental agreement, then you go with it. Now, should, should I do a motion for that? Of course. If we're, we're going to change the, we're going to add a fee for use of property.
Should we wait until we have the actual document drawn up and then adopt that document?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay.
But Bill, you want to know if it's right, huh?
Yeah. We had one ask.
We had to meet you before and all agree on the numbers.
Hundred dollars for how long? For the day.
So that would be for village grounds and then fireman's field pavilion.
It's any village property.
Okay. We don't charge for that.
We charge nothing. No security deposits. In comparison, Wardman Township, Linda, got this information. What was the charges that you talked to us about?
It's for one of their just plain pavilions, a hundred dollars, and you get it for, is it four hours? Because they do, they split the day in half. They make a hundred dollars on the first half, a hundred dollars on the second half of the day. You could book the whole day, but then you have to pay two hundred dollars.
And the enclosed for that is what, three hundred and fifty?
Three hundred and fifty, and actually, it went up a little bit last year, thanks. We do our family reunion there, the big, the big building. Completely enclosed facility.
There's costs involved to fill out people who use the property. You know, we always like to spruce up, you know, give them extra mow on that property. Police have to unlock the building. There's costs involved with it, so it's time that we start getting ringers for those costs.
And do we like the idea of we would have the bathroom available?
Sometimes we do now.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think with the paying, I think it's sort of now.
They need to have...
They need some of the...
I know during the Monday musical thing, although we wouldn't charge for that. That's always open.
It's always open, yes.
That would be a non-profit.
That would be a non-profit, non-commercial, right?
Now, streetscape is not...
A non-profit, but that's not a, that's not a non-commercial application. There's definitely commercial implications there.
Okay.
What about the, the strong market or farmer's market?
That's what we're saying, that streetscapes, they, they basically manage the farmer's market. But, but it is a commercial enterprise. And streetscape does receive vendor fees for that. And we're just basically, last year, we just gave the property to them. You know, there's been, there's been other things where, you know, property games has been done.
Right.
Is it reimbursed?
Make a motion to accept the report.
Second?
Call in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Reports from boards, planning commission. Lack of forums, you have me.
You want to talk about that?
What, the...
Um, this would be for M's ideas?
Okay.
That was just a informal presentation.
Boards on appeals?
Nothing.
Architecture review board?
Nothing at this time.
Forest Board?
Well, I'd like to bring something to our attention. The county's putting a million dollar sewer replacement in there. And the last time Bob Zetiker and I were down there, they were, we were watching, they were taking foot lanes, for the ground. When the weather breaks, they're going to replace that sewer. As a two-foot down there, as I, as I understand it now. I'm just going to let everybody know it's coming through the woods. It's where the old one is, it's adjacent to it. Okay? Any questions? No, you go.
Amendment from Heim Memorial? Western Reserve Fire District?
Nothing until next month.
Department of Special Committees? Communications for residents? Any new business? The old business? Motions, ordinances, and resolutions?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the mayor's appointments of Dave Smith for the Heim Fund, Eleanor Zetiker for the Forest, and Jeff Rabel for...
Western Reserve Fire.
Western.
Yeah. Fire.
Fire. Fire Districts.
Second? Call in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
I'd like to make a motion, this would be out of our street committee, to donate two unused cruisers. It would be our Explorer and Crown vehicles to the Youngstown Police Department.
Second?
Yeah.
We got the...
We have the...
Well, I think I found, it's on the high audit site. There are different requirements, as I'm seeing here, for the township, from the county versus the township and the village.
Right, okay.
Before the, for the county goes through the board commissioners, who then approve it being sold and or disposed of. For the villages, I'm, it's not moving to the county. I would say this.
Pending review?
Yes. Make the motion pending approval, operation by the solicitor. If it's okay, then I'll, I'll let everyone know, and I'll do the pending to that, so you have it for your files. If not, then we'll talk about it next.
Okay. Yeah, just a second, right?
Yeah. Call in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay. The motions, ordinances, resolutions?
How about a motion to accept the 2014 engineering agreement with MS Consultants?
Okay, we're okay. We have time to look it over, right?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Okay, we want to make a motion to honor Robert Zetiker for a resolution, right? We want to do that now.
Sure. All right, you can, Eleanor, come?
Yeah.
Go ahead and pass it.
We'll pass it now. I'll get a plasticize and stuff like that, make it a little nice, and then Tim can give it to you.
Can we get a second on that?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay.
A motion to waive the three readings to pass by emergency resolution setting monthly meeting schedule?
Second? Roll call?
Uh, Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Attorney Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Major.
Yes.
Mrs. Cernan?
Yes.
Mrs. Yash?
Yes.
Five zero?
A motion to pass a resolution setting the monthly meeting schedule for all village boards and committees for the year 2014, declaring emergency.
Second? Roll call? Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Attorney Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Major.
Yes.
Mrs. Cernan?
Yes.
Mrs. Yash?
Yes.
Five zero, okay.
All right, any other motions, ordinances, resolutions?
Chris, you signed this resolution for Martin Naples, right?
Should we?
But we got a...
Shut up.
Frank Miller's got it signed. The original, who's got the original?
Me.
Me, okay. That's... Oh.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the committee, the council committee member, meeting members for the year 2014.
Second? We need to this one first. All right, second, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? We need to, Anthony, we appoint you to Russ on annual business assessment, right? I must assure you, right?
Russ? I was like a little question.
I feel comfortable with Russ.
What are you guys talking about?
We need to reappoint Bill's marshal, street commissioner, and solicitor. That's an annual...
We do that every year?
I think it's mandatory for solicitor.
Martin zoning. And zoning too.
Is that a motion today?
Well, we, wait a minute, wasn't there, I was just asking a question. At the last meeting of thirteen, there was a ordinance passed. Was that ordinance just to combine those positions back, either or, or something?
Yeah.
Okay, so, yes.
Yeah, that didn't have anything to do with...
So we need Russ, Anthony, and Dave. All right? Solicitors, zoning administrators, street commissioner, marshal.
Okay, so you want, you want separate motions for each individual?
Yeah.
Do you want to do them separate?
Okay, I'll start.
Are you going to do it all separately?
I'll speak about this, Anthony.
Yeah, sure. A motion to...
Can they be lumped together? Are they lumped?
Maybe not, maybe that's a better idea.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, a motion to appoint Anthony D'Appolito as solicitor for the village of Poland, 2014. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Are those appointments confirmed by, or are they just appointments of council? Does he appoint them and they confirm them?
Yes.
Yeah, he does. He does all the appointments to council approve. So we need to rescind that. Need to rescind that motion.
Okay, a motion to...
The mayor needs to make the appointments, the council needs to confirm the appointments. So he can say Russ for this, Russ for this, Anthony for this, Dave for this. You guys say motion to accept.
Okay, he already said that, though, right? So a motion to approve the mayor's appointment of attorney Anthony D'Appolito for solicitor of the village of Poland for 2014.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
No, you're not satisfied with this?
I'm just not thinking that if he appoints the four positions, I think all we do is one motion to accept the appointments. That's all I was asking.
Oh, all the appointments? Say one motion to accept the appointments like this?
Just as we did for the three previous ones.
Okay, gotcha, okay.
Does that mean, am I, am I saying that right?
Okay, that's just one.
So the motion, the motion, the way I understand it's going to be made is a motion to accept D'Appolito solicitor, Beatty, marshal Beatty, commissioner, and Spani, Sponti, sorry, as zoning. Correct.
Okay.
So I'd like to recommend others.
To make the appointment?
Okay. A motion to approve the appointments of the mayor for...
Yes.
For solicitor, attorney Anthony D'Appolito,